Ms. Teresa, did you do that? That young man?
Yes, I have to talk to Mr. Berger. He sent me an email this morning.
He told me he was.
Yeah.
We'll open the meeting in the regular August committee of the whole meeting, our first one with our new administrative lineup, and welcome the public who's tuning in at this time. And we'll open the meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance followed by a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
Thank you. Dr. Brenneman will be participating in the meeting tonight remotely. I'll be here in person, but Dr. Brenneman is going to be joined in the meeting. Are you there now, Jay?
I am, thank you, Mr. Harkins. I appreciate you covering down again. I'm out of town for work, and second time this summer, you've already covered down for a meeting, and I do appreciate it.
Okay. First up is public comment. Are there any citizens who wish to speak to the board for three minutes this evening? If so, please come forward to the microphone, state your name, and print your name and address on the tablet provided. Anyone? Okay, then the first order of our business tonight is the superintendent update. Dr. Nadalyn Gibbs.
One second, Mr. Harkins. Do we have members from Erie Arts and Culture in the room?
Yes.
Yes, sir. Okay, thank you. I just want to say my apologies again with so much travel that I've been doing lately that I totally forgot to put them on the agenda. They reached out to the superintendent and I in advance to get on the schedule. I dropped the ball on that. I do ask that we, if there's no objection, that we waive the time limit to allow the folks from Erie Arts and Culture to provide their presentation during the public comment.
Okay, no, if there's no objections, we'll do that right now. The Erie Center for the Arts and Technology?
Erie Arts and Culture.
I'm sorry.
That's okay. And Alyssa, do we have PowerPoint capabilities as well? Fantastic. Thank you so much for letting us jump in. My name's Susanna Faulkner. I am Executive Director of Erie Arts and Culture, also known as the Northwestern Pennsylvania Art Council.
And I'm Jim Hain. I'm the Arts Education Manager at Erie Arts and Culture.
So, welcome, Dr. Gibbs. We are so happy to be here. We are very strong partners with the Erie School District, and we want to go over who we are, what we do, and how we partner, and how we're looking to move forward. Next slide, please. Oh, can I? Oh, fantastic. Wonderful. Thank you. So, who we are. We serve six counties, and we live in the heart of Erie. So, we are down at Fourth and State, next to the art museum, and we are really here to nurture a vibrant region. And our four or three goals are to elevate, inspire, and connect artists, as well as organizations throughout Northwest Pennsylvania. We do this through three programs. Most familiar with the Erie School District is our Arts Education Program. That is our arts residencies and the various ways that we support different arts educators, as well as our rostered teaching artists, which we have over 60 for our region. We also serve through creative entrepreneurship. So, this is our creative and artistic businesses, whether that be a tattoo artist or an art gallery, or musicians. We are serving them and building their capacity. And then lastly is our folk and traditional arts. So, this might look like us going to the Vanango County Fair on Monday and meeting quilters and traditional artists, but it also means serving our refugee and new American artists and providing apprenticeship and grant funding for them. We do all of this in collaboration with the Pennsylvania Council on the Arts. They have 14 regions that you can see on the map there. We are up in the corner, of course, Northwest Pennsylvania. We also have the honor of serving and providing all three of their program areas. We are the only trifecta agency in the entire state that serves all three of those arts education, creative entrepreneurship, folk and traditional arts. And so, they really look to us to do innovative and cross-collaboration programming through our region. We really aim to be that regional arts agency where we create a future where the arts are the heartbeat of every community in Northwest Pennsylvania. We do this by two main ways. We provide grant funding to our artists and our arts organizations to provide all different types of projects and arts programming, as well as building communities. So, this picture here is from last school year over at McKinley at the Multicultural Family Night. It was absolutely beautiful. It was one of my first weeks on the job, starting as Executive Director, and it is such an important way for us to bring community together, whether that be through song, dance, visual arts, poetry, and all our different arts disciplines. So, I want to turn it over to Jim to talk specifically about the work we do within our Erie schools.
Yes, as Susanna said, we fund about 30 residencies a year across six counties. So, some of that funding comes from the Pennsylvania Council on the Arts. We also get funding from grants and individual donors. Through this funding, we're able to put residencies in schools, libraries, community centers, really anywhere that's looking for, to connect with artists. We have a roster of over 60 teaching artists across the region, visual artists, musicians, dancers, filmmakers. I just talked to somebody who does soap art. So, all these different things. And the cool thing about it is you can, you know, bring those into a school. You can, you know, put that into a STEAM program or something. This past year, we've, just in the Erie School District, we've been able to do hand drumming at Harding. We did dance with Strong Vincents Special Needs Students. We did a mural project at Perry. And we did after-school improv theater at Woodrow Wilson, which the students were really excited about. We actually brought it back because they were so excited about doing it. And we recently received generous funding from Erie Insurance to do programming in all of Erie County's community schools for the 25-26 school year. And so, we've already got the ball rolling on that. We are working with the community school directors already to get programming after school and in school during this year. I've already got some things set up for the school year, so we're very excited to be able to do that again. This year, we also launched a pilot program that we're really excited about. It's called Educational Passport. And this one was funded also from a grant from Erie Insurance. And it was a very exciting program. We partnered with six local arts and culture organizations, Experienced Children's Museum, the Erie Art Museum, the Erie Philharmonic, the Erie Playhouse, the Hagan History Center, and the flagship Niagara League. And what we did was, we chose two schools, one, two community schools, one in the city, one in the county. So, the ones we chose were Pfeiffer Burley and Union City Elementary. And what we did was, we wanted to provide arts and cultural experiences to all the students in all those schools. So, through grade-specific partnerships with each organization. So, basically, we assigned each organization one grade level. So, the Experienced Children Museum got kindergarten and so on. And all the students in those grades got to experience field trips and school visits from these organizations. We ended up serving 937 students total, and 536 of those were from Pfeiffer Burley. And just to give a rundown of what we did, the kindergarteners, they got three visits from the Experienced Children's Museum. They have a mobile sort of science and art van that they take around, and they went three times to the kindergarteners in both schools. And then, they, all the students at both schools got field trips to the Children's Museum, which they loved. One teacher told me that, one of the students said to them, you know, you said we might smile a little, but we smiled a lot. So, it's always nice to hear that kind of feedback from the students. First grade got a visit from the Erie Philharmonic. They actually got two visits from the Erie Philharmonic, and they brought over a dozen musicians in with cellos, trombones, drums, flutes, all kinds of instruments. And the students didn't just see the instruments, they got to try them out. So, they got to play the trombone, they got to see what it was like. And some of these students were like, I never saw one of these in person before. They were so excited. The second graders got to see a production of The Phantom Tollbooth Jr. at the Erie Playhouse. And what was special about that production is that there were 45 cast members, and every single one of them was a student aged five through 16. So, they got to see kids like them on the stage. And then, they got a Q and A afterwards. The third grade, they had a classroom visit with Cherokee Nation storyteller, Robert Lewis, and then they got a visit to the Hagan History Center, both of which kind of brought history alive to them. The fourth graders got a tour of the Erie Art Museum, and they also got hands-on hat making workshop with Sarah Howard, an artist, local artist. And the fifth graders were visited by musician Kelly Armour, who taught them sea shanties in preparation for a voyage on the Letty G. Howard. They got to go on the ship. The teachers and students gave us great feedback about this. The teachers said it gave the students experiences they might otherwise not have had. Some of the students told us they'd never been to the art museum, they'd never been to a play, they'd never been on a boat before, so it was a new experience for them. And as part of the program, the partner organizations also gave the students free or discounted tickets so they could come back with their families. And we have been granted some funding for another year, and we're hoping to expand this program to four schools, two in the city, two in the county. And that is sort of what we've been up to in this last year.
So, quickly, we know you have a lot on your plates, but as we look ahead, we are very excited to go into the second year of Educational Passport. We hope to expand that to serve all of our public schools, all of our community schools one day, building it up from two to four is the start to that. Based off feedback from families, from youth, from teachers, we would love to advocate to have theater back in all of our middle schools. That has been such an incredible experience with the youth at Woodrow Wilson, and we are bringing that back for a third time this year. And then, also to advocate for dance at both of the high schools. I am a proud collegiate grad, '07. I was the first graduating class to have dance for all four years with beloved Ms. Carla Hughes. I can tell you from being a dance educator for 16 years, if Erie High had dance classes and a team, they wouldn't just compete locally, they could compete nationally, like state and nationally. So, would love to see dance education at both of the high schools. Also, we've been in talk with some of your administrators about providing professional development technical assistance for your educators, whether that be for how to do arts integration, working with different special needs populations. We are coordinating, Jim is coordinating that now with some of your administrators. And then also, of course, we're going to advocate for increased funding for arts education and programming, and that's because we want to remember that the arts are essential. So, when we talk about so many things like mental health, violence prevention, physical exercise, self-confidence, communication, collaboration, so much of that can be taught through the arts. These are all documented areas where arts education has seen positive impacts for our youth, for their families, and for our whole systems as a community. So, really, we are so proud of the work that we do here, and we're so grateful for the partnership that we have together. So, please lean on us as you enter this new school year. We're excited to continue with the partnership with the United Way and with the school district. In your packets, you have our information, staff contact, as well as things like our refugee business directory for all our refugee-owned businesses in town. So, please use that, reach out to us, and know that we're a resource here always to work together. Thank you. Thank you so much.
Any questions? Any questions? Thank you, Susanna. Thank you, Jim. I hope by the mistake I made, misspeaking the name, confusing you with another worthy organization, I'll have it more emphatically ingrained in here. Thank you. Okay, now, the superintendent update. Dr. Nadalyn Gibbs.
All right, good evening, Board of Directors, constituents, and our community at large. Before I begin, I'd like to acknowledge two members of our board. Director Sharif celebrated a birthday this past Friday.
Thank you.
And Director Graff has a birthday coming this Friday. Happy birthday to both of you.
Happy birthday.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'd also like to formally introduce and welcome our new Chief of Accountability, Chief Accountability Officer, Mrs. Shaquita Gatewood, who just completed her first month with us. We're thrilled to have her leadership, and in this role, she essentially is responsible for our strategic thinking, planning, and execution. Lastly, I'd like to thank the premier team, Alyssa, Krista, Erica, and Emily. Thank you so much for a wonderful inaugural celebration. I think you all did it better than anyone that I've ever seen it. So, thank you for executing on the vision and making that come to life. Much appreciation. Board of Directors, thank you for your incredible support for entrusting me with the leadership of this district. Being able to start the district 90 days before officially becoming superintendent was a true gift, providing a valuable opportunity to hit the ground running and get to know our community on a deeper level. It all begins and ends with a relationship. My primary focus since arriving has been to focus on the power and connections, the power of connections and relationships. I hit the ground running, literally, in my BET Nikes. During my last two weeks, I made a personal goal to visit every school, creating direct touchpoints in every building. Since then, I've had the privilege of meeting with hundreds of dedicated teachers, administrators, support staff, parents, and caregivers. These listening and learning engagement sessions were designed with one clear purpose, to ensure that all voices are heard as we meticulously map out our collective future. The energy in these sessions have been palpable. People have openly shared their concerns and thoughtfully pointed out where we've fallen short, but they've also shared what makes them proud of our district and highlighted incredible opportunities for success. It's clear that people want to support Erie's public schools. They are excited, full of ideas, and want to be part of the solution. While I'm not ready to share all of the data from these sessions just yet, a few clear themes are emerging as opportunity gaps, such as communications, culture, curriculum, and instruction, and systems of support. These themes all point to a need for greater accountability across our district. We've already taken action. We've hosted leadership retreats with our cabinet. On Friday, as well as Monday, we will host with our executive principals, as well as central administration, to ensure we are all aligned on our work in these four core areas. I'm also committed to keeping everyone informed on our progress. I send an inside EPS newsletter to all staff every few weeks, and we will begin, we will soon begin sharing our progress with the community at large. Since day one, my mission has been clear, to build excellence together, hashtag bet. That word together is absolutely the key to our success. We must collectively reimagine the educational experience. This means ensuring optimal learning and working conditions alongside robust family and student supports so that an exceptional experience is attainable for every child. We've already started with the most critical work, what I call the heart work, of building authentic relationships. The listening and learning sessions have shown us that we have important work ahead, and we understand that it will not happen overnight, but rest assured, we will do it. As we begin our truly inclusive strategic planning process, we will collaboratively create a clear roadmap for how this transformation will unfold. We are committed to communicating our progress to the entire community every step of the way. In the meanwhile, I humbly ask for your continued unwavering support and for you to join our boots-on-the-ground movement. We need you to be enthusiastic fans for our schools and share the positive stories happening in our classrooms. We need you to support our students through enriching experiences and opportunities. In short, we need you to be the village. We are gearing up, back up for the start of school, and all departments are aligning their efforts. I'd like to give a shout out to our HR team for getting it done. We have 12 of 16 schools that are 100% fully staffed, and that consists of Collegiate, Connell, Dill, Edison, Eagles Ness, Grover Cleveland, Harding, McKinley, Pfeiffer Burley, PJD, and Perry. Congratulations on a job well done. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Gibbs. Now, an update on community schools from the United Way of Erie County. Mr. Jarasevich.
Thank you, Mr. Harkins. And good evening, everyone. Just pause, I believe we have a PowerPoint. And as we're waiting for that to load, just appreciate the opportunity to meet with you tonight to share a brief update on the community school implementation at Erie High School. So, as you know and remember, we started this process back in 2023 with a very thorough data collection and evaluation process. And in our time this evening, I want to briefly provide a reminder of that process and then spend the rest of the time highlighting our accomplishments in year one of implementation, the '24-'25 school year, and then the plan for '25-'26. So, for all the community schools and Erie's public schools and our other school district partners, we start with an action plan. So, this is very much a data-driven process. So this is very much a data-driven process where we collect and evaluate data, work with the school teams and district administration to identify gaps, look at the assets that are available in the schools and then put a plan in place for the strategies that we'll implement in the community schools that focus on removing the non-academic barriers that are preventing students from being successful. And then we have an ongoing data collection process through quarterly reports and other methods to monitor progress and adjust where needed. This is just a listing of some of the variables that go into the action planning process. I won't spend too much time on this, but are happy to talk through or answer any questions later. So for Erie High School specifically, we focused a lot on the quantitative data, but also qualitative data. So in terms of the quantitative data, the information that we incorporated into our collaborative planning process includes attendance truancy, absenteeism, tardiness data, discipline behavior incidents, mental behavioral health services, suspensions, expulsions, detentions, proficiency and growth scores, English language attainment, graduation rates, and then also enrollment and outputs, athletic CTE clubs, organizations, basically all the information available to us through the school information system and other sources. But then we complemented that with qualitative data through our community school data collection process. That included reviewing information from the Pennsylvania Youth Survey, other staff, student climate surveys that the district had implemented in the past, the community school surveys that we implemented all of our schools and then also a specific Erie High Community Parent Survey that we implemented for this process, as well as a specific survey to cyber students connected to the high school. We use that survey data to then develop focus group questions and we facilitated dozens of focus groups with staff, with students, with parents and with community members to gather that data as well. And you'll see that listed on these slides here. The result of this nine-month data collection process through our evaluation was the identification of really three key areas and we organized that information then into what we're calling, or we call brackets rather. So really, the needs were organized into areas where United Way could really take the lead with district support in implementing those strategies. So that includes, as you'll see on the screen and in your packets, basic needs, transition support, school culture related areas, support with career and college readiness, parent engagement, communication support, neighborhood and community engagement, some of the perceptions that we're navigating in the community regarding Erie High School. Then there's other areas where it's the district-led strategies with United Way support, where we can complement these strategies that the district would lead. I won't read all of those, but you'll see those listed there. And then finally, a category of information that we collected through our data collection process that is really the district's jurisdiction, but we provided that to you all for that resource. All told, we interfaced with about twelve hundred unduplicated individuals. And again, that's students, parents, teachers, community members. The next step was then to start that process of building out the strategies, but then also identifying the structure for the staffing at the high school. So as you know, there are four community school directors at Erie High School and they're all focused on one of four pillars. And those pillars were directly identified through the static collection process. So they include positive environment for wellness and learning. The goals that we have identified and we have strategies now in place around include improved school attendance, access to health and wellness supports and school culture. There's another pillar focused on expanded learning up and extracurricular opportunities. Goals there include increased access to out-of-school time supports, increased access to in-school enrichment opportunities. The third pillar, school transitions and life preparedness. So we have a focus on increasing supports for school transitions as well as career and college readiness. And finally, the fourth pillar is family and community partnerships. So improved family partnerships and involvement, improved neighborhood support in community schools and then also improved community partnerships. So that's really the focus that the United Way Community School Partnership with Erie's Public Schools, that's our focus for Erie High School, those four pillars and those ten goals. This is an example of how we then use that information to build out strategy matrix for the high school that detail those gaps, the resources and then the strategies. What I really want to highlight are the great things that we've accomplished. So once we completed that data collection process and we hired the community school directors in July of two thousand twenty-four, we had to undergo that development of the action plan and that took the better part of the school year, but a lot of great things were still able to be accomplished during that time. So I'd like to highlight in positive environment for wellness and learning, we were able to bring vision supports into the high school through a vision to learn partnership where twenty students were able to receive eyeglasses. We worked to revamp the staff lounge into a Zen room and that was in direct response to some survey data from the staff. We created a comprehensive community closet to support basic needs of students and their families. Implemented several celebrations and recognition events for students, including quarterly awards, attendance incentives and celebrations, the royal recognition program. Under the expanded learning and extracurricular opportunities pillar, we really focused this initial year on better connecting students to the existing clubs, but we did start expanding the club offerings and that included, one example is an esports club. But that will be a continued goal for us in the years to come. Also helped coordinate and plan fall, winter and spring activities fairs. Under school transitions and life preparedness, we implemented a senior spotlight initiative, highlighting students with plans for postgraduate in career college or the military. Helped plan and implement the career and job fair, which was very successful. Coordinated field trip opportunities for post-graduation planning, supported small group and one-on-one support for students and their transition planning and a pilot program for career preparedness on soft skills with Erie Insurance, which will continue and expand next year and years to come and then strengthening connections with existing school resources such as Go College and the Trio Program. And then finally, last school year, under family and community partnerships, a lot of effort was placed on helping improve communication with parents and families. So that was through Facebook newsletters, through marquee and other methods, increasing outreach with community organizations, volunteers, partners and donors. We had monthly opportunities for partner schools to come visit as well as opportunities to bring local businesses and manufacturers into the school to meet with the staff and tour. Supported a new student orientation process, outreach to the PTSA and then also supporting a cleaning effort through Serve Erie most recently and also a mural. So, you know, lots happening, but really that was while we were developing the actual strategies for the school. And so what I'd like to... Was there a question or comment?
No.
Okay, and so really what want to close with and highlight are the strategies that we'll be putting in place in partnership with the school district this upcoming school year. And so that includes an expansion of the community closet. You know, there was a lot of need and resource need for that closet this year, so we'll continue to expand that partnership. Increased staff appreciation. We heard that the Zen Room, while very well received, the other side of the building would like something similar, so we'll be working to support that. In health services, we are able to provide additional vision support, also expanding to mobile dentist. And then a variety of attendance improvement supports will be in place under that pillar. Also, under expanded learning and extracurricular opportunities, increased access to out-of-school time programming, so those clubs and organizations and other activities will also be strengthening connection between the middle school and the high school, supporting that transition period for students from eighth grade into ninth grade. Also increased health and wellness programming offered in school and after school. Under school transitions and life preparedness, we'll be developing two student leadership programs for the school in partnership with staff and then creating additional college visit opportunities. Also expanded career job fair and strengthened college, and a strengthened college fair program. And then finally, under family and community partnerships, some of those strategies include hosting site visit or hosting a national night out event, which just happened on Tuesday, which was very successful. Strengthening parent engagement, also a focus on PTSA, expanding new student orientations and the rising ninth graders into the school. Supporting increased beautification efforts, the identification and alignment of volunteers with school needs. Then also formalizing the community school leadership team and other, other ad hoc groups that would need to be, to support the school. So lots happening, a lot of great things to celebrate already in the first year. And with this upcoming school year, we are very excited to continue the partnership and expand the strategies that we just noted today.
Thank you, Mike. Thank you for all that the United Way does for our community schools. Is there any questions or comments from board members?
Yeah, I do, although it's not for you, Mike.
Okay.
I am kind of put Principal Orlando on the spot and I would like, if you could come up and say a few words as to what you see the impact of this having over the past year, if you could.
Great, so I get out of the hot seat.
You're on the hot seat.
You don't want to stand here with me? No, it's been great. I could tell you the background data that they did really identified the appropriate gaps for them to help us with. Definitely see the needs of the students being more filled because of what they brought into the building. For example, the glasses that were given to the students. The transitions for our students and our new families, that's better than it's ever been. So really, before we didn't have a system where parents had a space to come and really feel part of our school prior to this, but we created that with the help of United Way. So families felt a lot more comfortable bringing their students to our school. Extracurricular programming, we had more students participate than we ever have in the past and that was due to the activity fairs that we did during school and the esports team, which had a very positive year. And then, I'm not a social media guru or anything, so it was very nice having that support from them. We got more positive news out there than we've ever had before. So many good things happen every single day at our school. It's just unfortunate when a bad story gets out there, it takes twelve positive to overcome that one bad. So we're having someone, Megan, who was in charge of that, helping us out, walking around, taking pictures of all those positive things that our wonderful students do every day, really had a positive impact on our building.
That was great, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Orlando and Mr. Jarasiewicz.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Dr. Gibbs, our data integration system.
Sure, thank you. Wanted to take some time to provide an update on our progress towards selecting and implementing a comprehensive data integration system, which is a crucial next step in supporting our district's educational goals. Prior to the end of school and over the summer, a dedicated committee of transition team members, educators, support staff, BIS, mental health professionals and principals met approximately five times to select a vendor. Our goal was to find a platform that could provide real-time data, strengthen our multi-tiered systems of support framework, drive graduation and readiness and elevate student and staff voices through perception surveys. It is evident the board has made significant investments in our curriculum and facilities, greatly enhancing the student experience. This data integration system is the next logical step designed to give our educators the tools they need to leverage those improvements and ensure every student reaches their full potential by analyzing the data to prove the impact of our investments and to forecast when we need to make changes. So the selection process, after a thorough review, including positive feedback from reference checks, the committee unanimously recommends Panorama Education. Panorama's platform was chosen for its robust features that align with our goals. It's a well-regarded education technology platform that unifies data across academics, behavior and social and emotional learning, providing a comprehensive review, excuse me, view of student needs. Next steps, we will begin contract negotiations with Panorama Education. This investment is crucial for our commitment to data-driven decision-making and ensuring our educators have the resources to build on significant investments you have already approved. I'm asking for the board's consensus to finalize the contract negotiations and place the contract on the agenda for approval next week. Thank you for your support.
Any questions or comments on this for Dr. Gibbs? Is it scheduled to be on the agenda then yet, Doc? Are you waiting to hear from us to give a nod to proceed?
Yes, the intention was to receive a consensus from the board to be able to place it on the agenda and we would take a... The contract will be reviewed hopefully tomorrow. I'll have my hands on it, be able to review it on behalf of the district and then we'll be able to get it on the agenda by Friday. So long as you're willing to move forward.
Is there any objection to proceeding that way from anyone?
No, no objection, but Mr. Harkins, I do have a few comments I want to make. I think that this is a great timing for us to get, I'm glad it was unanimous that the committee decided that it was unanimous. You know, this is a fantastic timing because, you know, with Ms. Gatewood taking the new role, that's going to have a powerful impact on the district with our strategic plan that's coming up. And of course, all the other decisions that we make leading up to the budget on where to put resources. And also just having seen firsthand the amount of work, additional work after hours and the work, you know, the building administrators and principals have to put into the data collection and, you know, the work that's involved in that, just using, just, you know, hodgepodge or whatever's available. I think this will help professionalize, professionalize this. I know Dr. Gibbs didn't get to it, but one of the most exciting things I found out about this was that I believe, and correct me if I'm wrong, Dr. Gibbs, that there are sort of like playbooks that would guide buildings on what to do with the data if certain things are appearing, rather than let's just figure it out and then you get all sorts of different variation across the buildings. I think this brings a level consistently, so I, you know, I'm in full support of it and I'm glad to see it and that, you know, hopefully, you know, I can't wait till we get to see the fruits of the labor here. I know everybody else that has talked about data and data collection, I know that my colleagues there, I think, I think we're going to really love what this system is going to do for our work at the board level as well.
So Dr. Brenneman and I are in favor of proceeding with developing the contract and putting it on the agenda. Is everyone else comfortable with that? Okay, you can proceed with that. Next, Ms. Carrie Roach, Director Supervisor of Health Services with an immunization overview. Ms. Roach?
Thank you, Mr. Harkins, thank you, Dr. Gibbs and then all the board members, thank you for having me. So I just wanted to give a quick overview of our many efforts of trying to get all of our students fully vaccinated and in compliance with starting school at the end of the month. And so I just wanted to go over a couple of things. Certainly, there are several vaccines that are required depending on the child's grade level. The school nurses have been very diligent in educating families and promoting what is required for school enrollment and attendance. Now, this data was as of July twenty-second, I do have data as of today to update you. I'm not going to go through every single school unless you have a question, but as far as the elementary school, the total went from ninety-three down to seventy-five and the middle school from two fifty-five to two twenty-three and the high school went from two sixty-one to two twenty-eight. So we're at a total of five hundred and twenty-six students that are non-compliant with their school-required vaccines at this date. So we've worked with the local hospitals, LeCom and Community Health Net to facilitate immunization clinics for our families and our students. immunization clinics for our families and our students. We hosted one yesterday at Erie High at the National Night Out. It was a nice success. I, I wish for a little bit more, but we were able to vaccinate 20 students, so we'll take that. And then you can see that we have some upcoming clinics here, one's this Friday at Pfeiffer Burley, and then we were able to add one to August 12th, which is next Tuesday, which will be at Erie High School, their 12th grade open house. A lot of our, as you can see in the data, a lot of our students in the high school level is where our numbers are the worst. That would be the required second meningitis for incoming 12th graders. So we've tried to have a lot of efforts in hitting those opportunities for the high school students, so we will host another clinic next Tuesday, and then we will have one on August 13th at Strong Vincent Middle School, and then again at the open house at Emerson Gridley. So we have several opportunities that we are providing for families. We've worked very hard in promoting these opportunities. The community school directors have been phenomenal in supporting the efforts, going door to door, you know, contacting, making phone calls. So I, I really appreciate this group effort in, in trying to get all of our students vaccinated. Here's just one of the flyers you'll see. I do have all the other flyers that we've completed if you want to, a copy of them, but they will be on our social media platforms, they will be on the school's social media Facebook pages, Parent Square. Erica Irwin has been wonderful in getting the word out and supporting that communication efforts. So, any questions?
I have a couple.
Yes.
But that 500-plus number you said, does that, can, does that include, do those people tend to reject or avoid all vaccinations, or do they, this is just one, maybe one with one particular vaccine, or?
So typically, we, those that are, want a religious or philosophical exemption, usually will write that for all of the vaccines. And so we, we know that year to year, you know. However, with COVID, that certainly has affected and changed the mindset of several family members, and so we've seen an increase in those exemptions as it relates to the seventh graders and the 12th graders that are requiring vaccines.
I'm curious about measles because it was such a problem elsewhere. Are we, are we doing well enough?
We are doing well, yes.
And with the national news lately that they're going to withdraw federal funding for upcoming immunization programs, you don't have the answer to that. Is there any reaction you want? I mean, is there anything you can say how we anticipate we'll get through that, or is that, is that a dumb question?
It's a difficult question to answer, but I anticipate, at least locally, hopefully we won't be affected by, you know, the impact as far as the school-required vaccines. Certainly, I'm an advocate for the COVID, the flu, RSV, you know, type vaccines, but as far as the school-required, I, I don't anticipate seeing an, an impact.
Well, thank you for the efforts you are making. Is there any other questions or comments? Zach?
I don't, I don't have questions, just suggestions. Like, I know, like, during the pandemic, one of the, one of the most successful ways to vaccinate people, the Health Department utilized the community centers, because they're, like, we were able to do the vaccination, COVID testing, and the main three of them, and people flooded there. So I mean, I think in the future, I just suggestion.
Yeah, absolutely.
That I have that, that we find that's successful. A lot of people throughout the county were able to pinpoint out and, and get their vaccination.
Yeah, that's the, one of the efforts in, in trying to hit all of our areas is, you know, going to the different schools, just at least being able to access those, you know, if they are in walking distance, but absolutely, I will, I will add that.
Because what we did at the Health Department is, like, we partnered, like, each health system at a different, different community centers, like, for example, UPMC was at Booker T, AHN at, at M1K, and, and LeCom was towards Lower East Side, and so many people got vaccinated. Just suggestions.
No, no, I appreciate that. I think a, a lot of what people don't understand is the funding for vaccines can be a challenge, you know. We don't know how many we're going to anticipate, how many vaccines we need to have on hand. We encourage registration, but in preparation for those clinics, it's difficult for the LeComs, the UPMC's to know and judge because meningitis vaccines, $250 apiece. So it's hard, but absolutely, we'll take that back and utilize that. Thank you.
Go ahead.
Suggestion is organizations, the African American Concerned Clergy, need to get it into the churches so they can in turn tell the parishioners, African American Concerned Clergy, AACC.
Thank you.
Carrie, that 500-plus number, how would that compare, if you have a number, to the pre-COVID period of normalcy before it became an issue?
I should have had that for you, Mr. Harkins, but I don't.
That's all right.
Honestly, in comparison to last year, you know, our numbers are, are much better. Typically, middle school, we have 100, a little over 100 in each middle school that are outstanding. So, you know, to have numbers such as 55 and 69 and 77, those are, I know that sounds like that they're high, but they're actually much better than we have in years past. The, the increase in the seventh and 12th grade requirements in 2000, I believe it was 16, when they initiated that change, that's when we've seen a, a change, you know.
Dr. Gibbs has something? Okay.
So that the 500 number, roughly 500 number?
529, or 526.
526. Does that include the people that have opted out?
No.
Okay, so that's ones that have not opted out.
Correct.
Okay, how many, do we roughly know how many have opted out across the district?
I can get you that data because we, we submit it every December, but unfortunately, that number is increasing, and so we're working with the Health Department to try and educate the families and, and try to avoid that. Unfortunately, we cannot deny.
Sure, no, I.
Or philosophical exemption.
Yeah, I'm not saying we should.
Right.
You know? Thank you.
We all thank you for the efforts you're making.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a nice day.
Mr. Harkins, I don't, I don't have any advice for Ms. Roach. I just want to thank her and everybody else who, you know, has, continues to push for this every year. You know, we're seeing institute, now institutionalized, as you pointed out, Mr. Harkins, now an institutionalized anti-science, anti-science fear-based messaging. They're trying to, you know, trying to normalize, and, you know, of course, communities that are most at risk from and limited access to healthcare, et cetera, as it already is, are going to face the biggest brunt. You know, you look at the County Health Needs Assessment, and you look at the city, and you look at the students and the families we're serving, needing the, having the highest, the lowest access to healthcare, and the highest needs for, and the highest risk for diseases, et cetera. And, you know, we need to continue to advance messaging, and I think we're going to see improvement there as we start to improve the social media and other messaging platforms in the district. And of course, as we start, as we continue to, to build relationships with the community and they get that trust, because really, that trust component is where it's at, and I think that that will continue to, to give us a good, you know, positive, you know, growth, going back to where we should be going in the right direction. So just want to make those comments and thank Ms. Roach for her time.
Thank you, Dr. Brenneman.
Okay, Dr. Nadalin Gibbs and Ms. Shaquita Gatewood on the strategic plan, an update?
So we would like to provide an update on the progress of our strategic planning process, which is a critical initiative for our organization as we work to become more strategic in our thinking, planning, and execution. As you know, our previous strategic plan is coming to an end, and we're now moving forward with the first stage of developing a new one. Our immediate steps is to solicit an appropriate vendor to partner with us. We have drafted a request for proposal, known as RFP, which we plan to release on next week. The goal is to receive proposals and to be prepared to make a recommendation for a vendor in September. This is a crucial step as finding the right partner is essential to the success of the, this project. Approximately seven years ago, our district began the last strategic plan process, much of which has been completed. We are taking a fresh approach, and will be considering a wide range of vendors to ensure we select the best fit for our current needs. We believe this is an excellent opportunity to reimagine our educational experiences for students, and we want to find a partner who can help us achieve this vision. In thinking about the proposed and ambitious timeline for this process, it consists of the following. So September, we hope to finalize the contract negotiations with a selected vendor and approve an agreement with this, at the September board meeting. September through February slash March, engage in the strategic planning process, which will be an inclusive engagement process involving our entire community, ensuring a wide range of voices are being heard. And then, of course, February, March, or March, April, we, we are a little, we are blinded by the March date to report out our findings and next steps from the strategic planning process, because also in the month of March, our comprehensive plan will be due, and so we would want to make sure that the strategic planning process will directly inform and support the development of that comprehensive plan. So we are committed to a thorough and thoughtful process that will set us on a successful path forward, and will continue to keep everyone updated on our progress.
Thank you, Dr. Gibbs. Ms. Gatewood, anything to add? I just, I just want to point out, since this is the strategic plan is being mentioned, in the spring of this year, as we were approaching and bringing the budget into final focus, the board heard from advocates to reestablish the library system, and a decision was made to move that into the realm of the strategic plan, so I hope we keep that alive and, and our promise made to those people will, that will address it seriously and do the best we can with it will be a part of that update. And I mention it because those people who spoke earlier tonight about the arts and culture reminds me that we had a program called SPAVA here years ago, School for the Performing Audio Visual Arts. And it, we, it took a lot of effort to get it launched, and it was functioning very well until we gradually began to have to withdraw support of it because of lack of funding from Harrisburg. So just like with the library, it's, it's uplifting to be able to consider now, and I'm hoping that the strategic plan will also include the arts and culture people, what they're attempting to do, so that we can try to restore something close to what that SPAVA program offered our students. Anyone else on the strategic plan? Linda? Sorry.
That's okay. You're reading the agenda. Yeah, so I'm just curious, who is on the selection team for the vendor? Like, who's going to, who, who is, what, what team is making the decision as to what vendor to go with?
So currently, we have a transition team in place. That transition team was created to ensure that we could have, they could make short and long-term recommendations. What we've done is tried to make sure that we have representation across the board so that it is probably more extensive than it needs to be, and so we will take the same approach in relying on, referring back to the transition team and, and beyond.
So for our many viewers out there, can you just kind of identify the transition team members or what positions and stuff like that?
So the core team of transition team members consist of the directors at, at each level, and so that, of course, consists of our Executive Director of HR, our Assistant Superintendent of Academics, which is Ms. Sumagala, our Assistant Superintendent of Operations, Mr. Brockman, along with Director of Student Services, Director of Educational Services, and Director of Special Education Services.
Okay, thank you for that.
And of course, since now we've added our, along with our Communication and Public Relations Coordinator, Erica Erwin, along with Shaquita Gatewood. And then from there, we would also, so as we've done with our data integration system, we've added educators, we've added administrators, we've added attinerant staff, support staff, so that we could get a good representation across the board.
Okay, thank you for that.
Mr. Brian Cheese has a budget update for us. Brian?
Good evening, everybody. So this is a hot topic, the budget. As most of you may know by now, the state legislature has not yet passed a budget for the 25-26 school year, which began on July 1st. There's supposed to be a balanced budget in place by June 30th of every year. Those of you who are from Pennsylvania, you probably realize that this is not an uncommon occurrence. I believe maybe 14 out of the last 22 years, it's been late. With that in mind, I just want to share an update on our current situation so you know how it might impact us. So when the state doesn't pass the budget on time, we could have some funding gaps, and you're hearing in the media right now that some schools may experience that. And to that point, last week, the Secretary of the Budget actually issued a letter confirming that key payments to school districts are going to be delayed until that budget is signed. And these payments include our basic education subsidy, transportation, social security reimbursement, and more. Now, keep in mind, our school district's budget is made up 70%, of state funding, a significant portion. So because of this heavy reliance on state money, usually, I would say it's very critical that we are paid on time by the state. Now, I say usually because luckily for us, we planned conservatively, and I've actually been anticipating this very situation. We have a healthy cash balance in our general fund. It's approximately $45 million as of this morning in the general fund. And I will continue to operate, or I think the district will continue to operate without any interruptions for at least the next two or three months. We could probably go even longer. I think the longest that my research showed was like nine months or something that we've gone without a budget. So I just want to assure everybody, staff are going to get paid, programs are going to continue, the schools are going to open, and all the students that, all the services that students are used to having, they're going to have, for now and for the foreseeable future, even during this sort of impasse time. And I want to make sure everyone is confident that I'm monitoring the situation. I'm using all the available resources we have, the media, PASBO, other educational supports that are out there, and I'll provide periodic updates to the board as I have been doing the last few weeks. And that concludes my summary. Thank you, Mr. Harkins.
Thank you. Mr. Harkins, just real quick, if there's any questions, I want to thank Mr. Cheese for his detailed emails, you know, that I've been forwarding to the board. I think they're fantastic, they're wonderful detail, they're very, you know, understandable, down-to-earth, and they provide, you know, sequence of events and understanding. So I just want to say that every time I get one of those emails with your updates, Ryan, it's, it's, it really, again, it kind of blows me away every time I get it. I'm like, oh, wow, this is, this is even better than the updates we get from, you know, our, our trade association partners. So, you know, good work, and I just want to say, keep it up.
Any questions from board members or comments? Okay, thank you, Brian. Next, Board Policy Review Committee, Ms. Ametangelo isn't with us in person tonight, but Zach, are you able to pinch-hit for her?
So the Board, the Board Policy Committee meeting in July 20th was canceled. The next, the next meeting will be Monday, October. The next, the next meeting will be Monday, October 6th, from 1:00 to 3:00 in this building. So, October 6th, from 1:00 to 3:00, 9:10, Sasafras.
Any questions for Zach? Okay, thank you, Zach. Board Governance Committee, Board Priorities, Dr. Brenneman.
Yeah, Mr. Harkins, and not to take the role of our future mayor, Ms. Devlin here, but just a brief comment, just to update, you know, folks, just a reminder, as you've received emails and discussions before in the past, that we have an upcoming mini-board retreat coming up. And at that retreat, we'll be discussing communication and board priorities. Also, you know, there's, you know, it'll be great to hear, you know, what Ms. Gatewood and the cabinets and Dr. Gibbs has, you know, as they've gone over the previous year's priorities, both, both in form and function, and how it can inform our priorities this year. And, you know, maybe a discussion on, on changing the process and what that looks like. So just, you know, this, between now and then, you know, keep your, your minds turning about what you think about the priorities and how you think it would be great to connect and to learn from it and to follow through and to see progress, what progress looks like. And that way, we can be ready to have that discussion when it comes. Of course, Dr. Gibbs and I, you know, collaborating to have an agenda, et cetera, before you. But those are essentially the two agenda items, but we'll have all that before you in advance. So those are just my only comments.
Thank you, Jay. Linda?
So should we send, like, things that we'd like to bring up or address prior to the meeting to anyone? Or just bring them to the meeting?
I, I think it would be helpful, and I appreciate your question, Ms. Graff. I think it would be helpful, definitely, and you, you have already in the past, when it comes like, and a couple other members too, around when it comes down to communication. So, you know, we've got the two topics, the priorities and the communication. So I think providing, even if you don't, even, and this for anybody, even if you don't have like a fully-formed thought when it comes to the priorities, again, not just the what the priorities are, but also in how we measure and determine, you know, what success looks like, et cetera. You know, however you see that, even if you don't have a fully-formed thought, feel free to email that to Dr. Gibbs and copy me, and vice versa, you know, email me and copy her between now and then, and of course, that would, it, it'll help, definitely help us in preparing the conversation, make sure that it is as meaningful and productive as we can make it.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, next is the draft of the new business. Does anybody have any questions on that? I haven't had a chance to really look thoroughly at it, but just a quick glance, looks like a lot of it's in workflow. Neil, is there anything you want to call our attentions to or that we need to know about? Or if not, okay, but I just thought, is there anything in particular that?
The one thing that I want to make sure that everybody at least has knowledge of and looks at is item 7.20, which is the proposed bus monitoring services with Booker T. Washington Center on our EMTA buses. So right now, it is currently listed as a placeholder. We are still talking in negotiations with them on the, the availability of, on which buses they will be riding. I did get word that this would encompass all of the buses that are, that take our students home on EMTA from both Erie High and Collegiate Academy. And so, that's good news. We'd like to try to expand that to the, the buses for Emerson Gridley if we can. And the reason that I'm bringing this to everybody's attention is currently, the contract is listed to be a not-to-exceed contract, where the total value, if everybody's employed all the entire time, it's close to a $300,000 investment. And so, that is something that the board, I think, should pay close attention to.
Thanks for that, Neil. Any questions or comments from board members on the draft agenda?
You can just say Linda without even looking at it. I'm going to really show my ignorance here, but I, I admit that I'm showing my ignorance. In workflow means that there's something in board docs that reference that or not? Oh, so I'm not showing my ignorance.
Workflow is the internal process that is used to approve the contracts prior to them being final form, for your view.
So that doesn't tell us what's in board docs at this time. We'd go to board docs to find it, okay?
You, you would see it, it's just not final.
Right, okay, so, my question is, with, like, the, the 7.42, the expulsion things, is it possible in board docs to get a summary of these, the grade, the school, the offense, and the outcome? We don't need to know details, student names or anything, but it would really be nice to know, like, what's, what types of things are happening in the schools?
Ms. Graff, I'm looking at the digital agenda right now, and they, they are in there in the draft.
Okay, thank you. And but the placeholder for the, for the school handbook, what was it, the handbook and the, student handbook and code of conduct is a placeholder. Are those in there for our review?
The placeholders do not have documents associated with them yet. They're, it's just an agenda item with no document attached. The anticipation is that document will be done prior to Friday, so that we can release a final document Friday, a final agenda Friday afternoon with those documents attached.
Okay, because that's a pretty extensive document to review. And the other, other thing I had was the 758, the resolution establishing the Erie School District Historian.
You're going to steal my thunder, Ms. Graff. So I was going to, yeah, and so that's what I was, I appreciate you bringing that up, because that's what I was going to speak on. Again, I had mentioned it before, previously, and of course, I'd emailed the board about it. So, you know, just some feedback on this, you know, this, really, the inspiration for this is just sitting next to John for the past couple of years. And of course, you know, Mr. Harkins is being our, our historian there. But also, having spoken with a number throughout the district in my years on the board, of course, just knowing that we, we really don't really have, you know, the history of, of the district as it, as it has been and has, as, you know, long time ago, current history, history that we're making right now. We don't really have a, you know, formal process or place for, for, for recording that. And so, the idea of, of having a, and I, you know, I didn't, I didn't create it. Then there are other, other districts and institutions do this kind of thing elsewhere, where they provide an honorarium, and they have folks apply to, it's sort of like a poet laureate and other things too, where they, they apply and they, they present what they want to do, like, what, what were their focus be around the district on the history? And then, a committee is spelled out by the resolution shaped by the superintendent will choose an awardee out of those applications, which ones speak to the most to the district at the time. And then, that person for two years, they will collaborate closely with the administration and others throughout the district in, in developing that history, the, the recording that history, whatever that project is, and then providing frequent updates to the board on how that is going. And then, also to develop something at the end, like a, you know, something that can, that we can celebrate. Now, as far as that goes, I, I've spoken with the Hagan History Center. I've spoken with the history professors at all the universities, Mercer, Skanen, and Edinburgh, and of course, EC3, the Community College. They've all expressed a tremendous amount of excitement. They said they even have folks that, you know, they think would want to apply to do it. And also, it would be a great opportunity where they might be able to collaborate with, you know, their own students and helping support the effort. The Hagan Center was really supportive. They said we could, they can house whatever's developed there, so that it can be on display for the public to come and see, and be, and, and see it. And, and, you know, I mean, that's, that's, that's essentially it, that, you know, this would be, you know, something new and provide some excitement. I did share it with the teachers' union, I haven't heard back yet on, on that. And, you know, the goal here too is that it can also be integrated at, as the, as educators determine, that they can integrate this into their curriculum and activities within the district. And so, it would bring a level of, of, you know, back to our priorities of climate and culture in the district. It would, it'd bring a sense of pride to the district and feeling of place, et cetera. So, and I'm happy to answer, you know, any, any questions regarding, regarding the proposal.
No, thanks, and I think that's very exciting. I just was curious if it was like a volunteer position or something that would be paid. So you addressed that, that's very interesting. I think it's a great idea, thanks.
Anything else on the new business for next week?
I have an item. I asked our solicitor to look at this because it should be a concern to us that the big, beautiful bill that was just passed includes a private school voucher system. And, you know, I asked our solicitor to take a look at that and explain to us what it says and when it's coming into effect, because it could have a, you know, very major impact on us.
I appreciated the question from Mr. Nichols, because I really enjoy reading federal tax law. In the big, beautiful bill, there was a provision included known as the Qualified Elementary and Secondary Education Scholarship Program, which allows individuals, any individual, to make a donation of up to $1,700 to a qualified scholarship organization, and for that donation, to receive a dollar-for-dollar federal tax credit. So if you put $1,700 into a qualified, into a qualified scholarship organization, you'd have $1,700 less of federal taxes that you would pay. And they would use that money then to fund eligible students in private or parochial schools. An eligible student is an individual whose family has 300% of the median gross income for your area. In Erie, I calculated that out to be about $130,000. So anyone from a family which would have an income of about $130,000 would be eligible for that. The state does have the ability to opt out of this program. There is no methodology for that to happen at this point. The United States Department of Education Secretary has been tasked with promulgating regulations dictating how this program is to work and any other qualifications that need to be included within it. So it'll be a while before that is done. I believe that is everything I had found out. Do you have any other questions regarding it?
When does it go into effect, the next calendar year?
I believe they, the information that I had seen was, it was likely going to be rolled out in 2027. They have to do the, the regulations, then they would have to implement them, and then we'd likely see it for the 2027 year.
So it's, you know, just something we need to be thinking about, because the private schools, primarily parochial schools, have done a remarkable job of keeping open all these years without having the funding sources we have. But part of that is they pick and choose who their students are. You know, they do not offer special education, for example. So as this goes forward, we need to know that we need to protect our students, and we need to protect our better students. I think that we ought to consider as one possible approach to protecting our student body would be to go to an academic middle school like we have Collegiate. Just to throw that out, we've got a long time to think about it. But I don't want to react to them, I want to be dealing with this as we're going along. Because we know that it can be state-by-state adopted or not, but our governor at one point indicated he had an interest in, in vouchers. And the way this works is there's no cost locally to participate. And so, I, I would be, I would be surprised if Pennsylvania doesn't participate in it. And we just need to start thinking of ways we can protect our student body. And certainly, the best thing is just getting better, which we're all trying to do.
Thank you, Sumner. Worthwhile.
I have a comment, James.
Linda?
Yeah, I mean, Pennsylvania already has an educational improvement tax credit. So they're already doing something similar. People can make donations to similar types of funds for schools, for private schools, and they are, they get a tax break. It's not, I don't think it's dollar-for-dollar, but...
It's 90%, it's close.
They get, yeah, they already get the tax break. So Pennsylvania is already doing the same thing. Now, they're extending it to the federal tax dollars.
Yes, but, Ms. Graff, that's largely corporate dollars that go into the EITC.
Could affect...
You're absolutely correct. This is for individuals.
Yeah.
So individuals would be able to take advantage of this as well.
Right.
Okay.
But, I mean, one thing I've heard, like, with the budget, I remember Representative, I was talking to Representative Bob Mersky, he said they budgeted $900 million more for, like, to, in Pennsylvania, in their budget for education than last year. So that's kind of hopeful, you know, if, once the budget passes, that we would get even level or even more than we previously did. So they say they, they allocated $900 million more than they did last year for all Pennsylvania.
Okay, and anything else on the draft agenda? Are we going to have an executive session?
We are.
Okay. Next is any other matter, anything else that board members want to question or comment on or bring up?
I've got a couple of things on that.
Go ahead, Sumner.
I talked to William Wright, who's the African-American AP course teacher up at Collegiate, and he had 82 students this last year, four classes. And 36 of those students took the AP test. And they just released the scores on that. And 26 of the students that took the test passed it by having a score of three or better, which is good. Our enrollment last year was 82, it's going down to 62 for this fall. So it must be getting around that the course isn't that easy. But a concern I have is that all of those students are from Collegiate. And I'm thinking at some point, we may want to consider offering this at Erie High as well. And Mr. Wright didn't see a problem with him moving over there as opposed to all the students moving over to Erie High. Just to throw that out, I don't know all the logistics, but I, I'm pleased we've had this much success with the course, but I just wish we had people, students participating at Erie High. And then, on the Community College, we had a meeting last month. They have 10 students enrolled, five from Collegiate, five from Erie, in their associate's degree program, which takes two years. And we graduated seven this spring, five of them were from Collegiate, two were from Erie. The two from Erie were the number one and two students, not really the target for the Community College. These students would have been successful anyway. But in, in talking to the principals, the big issue is the teenagers don't want to be away from their school. You know, it takes about half their class time for two years to, to complete the program. It's a huge advantage to them. They get out with a two-year degree, which is accepted at all the local colleges. They're still working on their accreditation, but they'll accept it. And then, of course, they're two years ahead, and then they can go into the workforce two years earlier. So it's, it's like a $100,000 benefit to the students who complete this. And it's concerned, concerns me, we only have 10 in it. And I, I would hope we might be able to work something out with the Community College and our high schools, where perhaps they could actually send instructors into the high schools as opposed to busing the children around in order to increase the participation in the program. I mean, we do have other programs. Kids will go to Gannon and Mercyhurst and take courses, and they may have specific areas they're moving into. But I just wish we had more than 10 in this, because it's just a great opportunity for our students. And to have only 10 in it, I don't think that's sufficient.
Anything else, Sumner? You had a couple, you said?
That's it.
Okay.
I've used up my time.
I've got two, but Linda's question about board docs and in workflow, when we were on the agenda, reminds me that back a few months ago, when we were in discussions about the transition between our retiring board secretary and Alyssa's appointment, it came up that when we went to board docs from a printed, strictly-printed agenda, it came up that when we went to board docs from a printed, strictly-printed agenda, that we did not pick anything like a deluxe version. We picked the bare-bones version that was available to us for money's sake and hoped at the time that someday we could maybe fine-tune that. And it came up in these discussions a few months ago that there were other versions of board docs that do a better job of providing details. To just state how it had been long ago, when it was just a printed agenda, it would have the name of the item or the heading or the title of the item. And there would be a one or two sentences at the most description of what that meant. And it was very easy to do, and I just would like to find something, like to see us find something closer to that kind of description of these specific little items that we find so many in workflow that... I just, when Alyssa gets her feet wet and has the opportunity among her other duties to just keep that, maybe look into what board docs offers and remind us and for the rest of us, just to keep in mind that maybe we could do better than what we had settled on in board docs, that there are maybe some versions that will do a better job of telling us and ultimately the public what these specific agenda items mean.
Mr. Harkins, I appreciate you bringing that up. You know, of course, this is open for public discussion on this topic specifically. And it'll be in a document that I'll be sharing that I had met recently with the board secretary's office. But Ms. Cook and Ms. Cunningham has been working, has putting a lot of time and effort in upgrading our board docs. And really, we approved the contract in our May meeting, I think. I could be wrong. But of course, you know, there's a variety of processes. I think, Ms. Cook, you correct me on what the timeline looks like. I think we'd be looking at mid-fall for implementation of that. But I don't know if you have anything you want to add.
Alyssa?
There is an extra version on board docs as it is now, that it's a very detailed version. So it would give you the actual resolution as well as, then I could attach every attachment again to it. But then that's basically me going backwards and printing the whole binder for you guys again, like we used to do. And doing that, then you're still not getting the actual final version anyways at this point because they're still in the workflow, they're still negotiating those. But with the new system, it is more detailed. It is more transparent. It is easier accessible to the board, to the community members themselves. And it would print a whole lot differently once we do get that system.
Well, thank you, Jay, for what you said. It makes me glad to hear it, but I'm just shooting for something and hoping for something in between what I think are two extremes, the old way and the current way. I'd just like to think we could find something in between that would be what I'd shoot for.
With the current system, not possible without me physically doing it myself and putting it into a Word doc and making it.
But they don't have a program that they could give us? I always had that impression that there was a program we settled on because we couldn't afford to go to the next best program.
Right now, no.
Okay. Well, thanks for that.
You're welcome.
Just, Neil, anything you can tell us about Edison progress, how we're doing?
I was waiting for that, Mr. Harkins. We are coming along nicely. On the agenda for next week are actual change orders for time extensions to the contracts. When the board approved the original contracts, the actual contract end date is Friday of this week, which we're not going to make. Right now, based on the way that the contractors are working and some hiccups that we ran into, we're probably looking at sometime in January for a completion. The building should be completely enveloped by the end of August, beginning of September. And they're slowly starting to put in the final touches in some of those areas. So cabinetry, flooring, painting, those kind of things.
Thank you, Neil. Anyone else, anything, any other matter?
Yeah, I have a question. Can someone give an update on where we are with the Harding renaming activity? If it's in works or what the status of that is?
Jay, any news or anything?
Oh.
Hi, thank you, Ms. Graff. We're working right now to coordinate schedules between the gentlemen who have expressed interest in that and our superintendent's office and any other person that needs to be or would like to be involved in that process to simply set the first kind of public meeting for that.
Okay.
So we are in that process. That's very much continuing. We had hoped that that might be before the start, or before the start of summer, but that wasn't possible. But it's still very much on the radar and working to schedule that.
I would be interested to be involved.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So unfortunately, I fell victim to our busy schedule and then the budget and then the graduations and the summer weather. So I was impatient about it, but as I hear Erica describe where we are, I think it is better to be facing that and dealing with it while school's in session or when we're more focused on, when the school community's in the building. So thank you, Erica. Okay, any other matter anybody wants to bring up? If not, the meeting will be adjourned or recessed.
Just, I can share it at the next meeting, but I just received some flyers from individuals or having back-to-school events, like, you know, so our families can benefit from back-to-school backpack. But I can just share it with Erica, and she can just share it. Because, you know, there's multiple people doing events and families who have opportunity to get clear book bags and school supplies for families.
Thank you. If you would, make sure that Erica has that.
Absolutely.
We will have our executive and assistant principals on Friday. So we want to make sure that we provide those updates as well as our central administration team retreat.
I'll share those flyers. Thank you.
Okay.
Okay, if that's it, we'll recess to the executive session.
Which is being held for the purposes of legal advice, litigation with some assessment appeals, and personnel.
Thank you for that. Do we want to take a five- or 10-minute break? Okay, let's do that. Let's reconvene at 7:10.